Hi, good evening. We're going to call this work session the Board of Education to Order. I'm rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up is the approval of the meeting agenda. Do we have one who should approve? Dr. Francis, the second, Ms. Holson. All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda? Seven zero, thank you very much. Missing a member. All right, so the first order of business under discussion item is the facilities master plan. Before we kick off with K G and D, I want to thank everybody for their hard work. This is not the culmination of all of the work that they've been doing for about the past year. This is actually the real jumping off point for us. I'm excited to start to dig into this. This is, as I take it from looking at the materials and understanding where we are, this is the architect's vision of where we are. This is not yet where the board is. The board has a lot of work to do in terms of prioritizing and taking this information in, deciding what the path forward is, and really starting community input on this because this is not something that should be done in a vacuum. There's a lot of work that's going to be recommended here for the buildings in terms of structure. There's a lot of work that's coming for upkeep for our buildings, and I think it's something that we will have to spend a lot more time on, but I think it's something that's very valuable, not just for the short term, but very much for the long-term impact on our buildings and the ability to maintain them into the foreseeable future. So I'm excited to start talking about this, but again caution people not to get too excited that everything in this is going to be done in the first year, but it really is the jumping off point. So with that, Dr. Gilde, I'll turn it over to you.
Excellent. Well, we are thrilled to have -- sorry, I never think about this thing. Never think about this thing. I'll eventually learn to use the mic. Lori, would you like to introduce, or would you like me to introduce? We've got it. Okay, so we are thrilled to welcome the K G and D team after this lengthy effort in putting together really what is a wonderful benchmark master facility plan. As Mr. Chairman Bernstein indicated, this is where the board work actually begins because once the plan is handed over, now is when the board and the collective community come together to prioritize those needs of the infrastructure of the schools, looking at the base needs of the accessibility and air quality and all of those features, but then also the future. So it gives us a glimpse into what does 15 years from now look like, and it will be some work for us because we'll have to prioritize some things as a board and community and then put those into actions. And once it's to the action phase, that's when you'll see your administrative team, you know, take over and put the, you know, hammer and nails to that, but we are going to need that board and community strategic vision to really make any of this happen. So I will turn it over to Russ and team.
Do you want to sit? Or do you want to?
I would rather sit.
Yeah, is there anything?
Do we have a wireless?
I don't have a wireless mic, but I can get him a mic. You don't have to press the button.
Okay. It's great to be here. I'm here with my partner Eric Keier and Associate Principal Eric Wilson. And of course, we're just sort of part of the team that's been doing this work for almost a year. What we're here really tonight to talk about is the program improvements portion of the master plan. While this is not something that anybody has approved or accepted, and there's a lot of prioritization to do, we've had a lot of feedback all along the way, so I would say this is a little more than the architect's plan at this point because especially on the program side, we've been working really closely with administrators. So you have 15 school buildings and 1.5 million square feet and something like 236 acres of land where you educate 9,000 students in pre-K through 12th grade. The average age, as we talked about before, is about 64 years old, and the replacement cost of the buildings alone is close to a billion dollars. So this facilities master plan included a lot of different steps. A third party did a demographic study.
Did you make it?
The facilities assessment, which we did first. Then we talked a lot about next generation schools and what they needed to be. We developed model programs in collaboration with administrators. We spent a lot of time doing the capacity analysis two different ways. And mostly what we're here to talk about tonight is what does it take to make those buildings more or less comply with the model program? And then there'll be another phase of refinement and integration. So we're talking about projected enrollment. Your enrollment is not projected to change dramatically. Basically, your elementary schools are about level. Your middle schools go up only slightly. The biggest change is the high school, which goes up 257, so you've got an overall enrollment change of 368. So the biggest reason school facilities generally need to be modified is for changes in enrollment. But what you're going to find here is that through a detailed analysis, there's some problems with some of the existing buildings and their capacity based on how they're currently used. It's important to notice, to know that the demographic study was done, especially for the elementary and middle schools, based on current attendance zones and attendance patterns. So if you change any of that, including magnet programs, some of this could move around. But overall, it's not expected that there would be a change. So then we started to look at capacity, and we looked at it in two different ways. The first way was to look at how the building is used today, the actual sizes of the rooms, and we adjusted your buildings for your class sizes and the actual sizes of the rooms. So at this point, we have, and you're about to get, something called the physical space inventory, which is the detailed data for each room in your entire school district. So as far as we know, you haven't had a capacity study done at that granular level so far. And that's important because it shows that a capacity shortage at the elementary schools of 260, it actually shows your middle schools are fine. Maybe you have a little extra room in your middle schools, but at Greenwich High School, you'll see on the bottom right, there's actually a fairly significant shortfall, and that's the building where more students are about to arrive. Actually, the peak enrollment at Greenwich High School is predicted to be in five years from 2022.
I won't take the time now, but please go back and recheck the New Lebanon numbers on the chart. This is target enrollment and actual capacity, if I'm not right. So go back and check. I won't stop.
We're going to -- you're absolutely right that there's a problem in the thing that we handed out to you about New Lebanon.
Okay.
And we've picked up on that, and we want to have a little discussion about New Lebanon maybe closer to the end.
Okay.
And how do we really address New Lebanon and the master plan? We need a little guidance from the board on how you would like us to talk about that.
Maybe we can hold our questions to the end.
Okay.
So one of the other ways to look at capacity is to look at the amount of usable square feet inside a building and divide by the number of students in the building. This is especially helpful at elementary schools. Frankly, it becomes almost meaningless at middle schools and high schools. Spaces with large auditoriums and large gymnasiums really skew it. But what you can see there is in the existing net square foot per student column, you'll see a bunch highlighted in red. And you can see at Cosco and Glenville and Hamilton, right at the top, that you have numbers like 108, 112, 129. When you look at the existing New Lebanon, you'll see 77. And again, very wise move to replace this building. It's a much lower amount of space per student, but we're trying to get up to that 100, 110 mark with net square feet per student. What we're about to show you is the proposed net square footage, the next column, and then the column after that, proposed net square footage. You can see that a lot of those get sort of level set in this 110 up to as high as 130 when we make modifications. So one of the things you asked us in our master, in the master plan was to try and do some benchmarking, try and come up with a uniform set of criteria that can be applied across every building so that you can have a pathway towards equalizing the facilities. So we want to start with program-based improvements at ISD. So we have a very simple code for our plans, which is blue is new and purple is renovated. So what we're proposing at ISD is actually to move parking lot to a hillside and get rid of the driveway that goes between the main building and the gym and that sort of diagonal covered walkway and replace that with a two-story building addition. So we'll connect the older building to the newer gym. That would allow us to move a couple of grade levels out there as well as special subjects and renovate the existing building, including the stepped floor area, which is a little difficult to use in its current configuration, and allow us to enlarge a lot of the classrooms on the split level portion of the building, many of which are undersized. This also gives us another entrance from the parking lot on the hillside, and it's a better arrangement for security in that kids will be inside a building on their way from the gym to the, from the main building. And that because we're building enough new space, we'll be able to have a little bit of swing space, which will allow us to renovate some portions of the building during the school year. Julian Curtis Elementary is a sort of a classic American school building. I think its date of construction is 1946, and we find with a careful comparison of the old scanned-in plans and walking through that it's almost in exactly the same condition as it was when it was built. So library moved, but that's about all that's happened. We actually found at least one set of addition plans for the building that we're never built. So one of the things that's interesting about Julian Curtis is that it's a classic example of what happens with an older school building in continuous service. Older school buildings really didn't have lunch rooms. They really didn't have media centers. These things were provided either at home, kids would walk home for lunch, or they'd use the public library where there was in-classroom books. So one of the biggest problems with Julian Curtis from a program accommodation standpoint is the common areas, not the classroom areas. So one of the proposed solutions here is to build an addition and sort of complete, it's a U-shaped building now, and complete it so it would become a courtyard building. And the blue construction on the inside of the courtyard would be a new library and media center, and on the outside of that is a new cafeteria and kitchen right next to the playground. And that allows us to convert the art room, I mean convert the existing cafeteria to the art room, move more of the office space to the front of the building, and convert the old, the cart library back into classrooms, which is what they originally were not too long ago. So a couple themes you'll see as we look at a lot of the elementary schools is to move more of the office space to the front of the building, move older children to the upper levels of the building, and to put the special subjects back together so you can get grade level clusters. And this is all about trying to meet the core goals of your model program. These designs by no means are complete. They're initial concepts to sort of get you on the road to, you need to do something like this to a building like this or about this budget to move forward, with the full understanding that once it's prioritized and moved forward, they'll be in more detailed design phase, and you may add other elements in, you may take other elements out. But one thing that's good about this approach is it allows you to put an elevator sort of where the terrace is outside the kindergarten room, that space with an X on it, but you get a secure building with an interior courtyard, circular circulation pattern, which is more efficient for young children, and you can solve your handicap access problems and your program accommodation issues holistically rather than picking off windows and accessibility and fixing a library one at a time. And I think that's one of the messages from the master plan that we're recommending strongly, that you look at whole building solutions rather than individual system solutions. North Myanis is actually projected to have fairly significant enrollment growth, and what we're proposing there is to put two more wings on the back of the building and sort of continue the angling of the wings similar to what exists today with the existing gymnasium. I can never remember the name of the carnival they had back there.
[laughter]
There's still room for that.
Are you sure?
Let me tell them, make sure you say it in your tongue, but there's still room for the carnival.
Thank you, Ray.
The, it's a challenging building, and then it has a two-story portion. It's quite old, and then a lot of one-story portions to the rear. The two-story portion has a number of rooms that are undersized, and again, the cafeteria is very undersized at this building. So the proposal here is actually to move the cafeteria to where the current gymnasium is, build a new gymnasium immediately adjacent to the playing field, and put a one-story classroom wing out the backside of the building. And that'll allow us to renovate the two-story older portion of the building and make those classrooms a little bit larger. So obviously, you know, very similar themes. We get special subjects in this area. We get gym and cafeteria out near the playground where they need to be the most, and we get grade levels clustered together. And you keep the historic look of both the older buildings. I mean, I guess we talked a lot early on about your buildings being 64 years old. That's not necessarily a bad thing. A lot of them are really charming buildings, and Julian Curtis, North Myanis, Old Greenwich, Riverside, we know they play important roles in the neighborhoods that they're in, and so we're looking for a way to bring them back to life and extend their, extend their life for another 50 years or more. North Street's experiencing a little bit of overcrowding, and we're just proposing a small four-classroom addition in blue there, similar to one that was done before, and that this would become a new pre-K center. So we take all the pre-K rooms at that location, put them together, and that frees up space in the existing building to right-size a lot of programs and to move office space around. Fairly simple solution, but this is a building that's in pretty good shape. Old Greenwich is probably one of the most difficult ones to deal with. It's, I think it's four or five different phases of construction, three of, four of which are really quite old. So we're proposing actually a partial demolition to the one-story wings on either end of Old Greenwich. And this is strategic, it's not that those portions of the building are in much worse shape than other portions of the building. It's just that they are at different levels. They're only one story, and once we remove them, it opens up a lot of possibilities. One is, which you can see on the site plan here, is to put a new entrance here off the drive in this end of the building. So Old Greenwich is one of the buildings that is not handicap accessible. The main entrance is about three-quarters of a story up in the air. That's not something you're going to build a ramp to or put an outside lift to. Right now, the main office is across the hall on that upper level. So, you know, from just a common sense access and control point of view, we want to move the main entrance down, take off that one-story addition, and do the same thing on the other side and build a three-story addition that makes it again into a courtyard plan that contains the elevator, which can deal with both the split levels. So you can see dashed in here is where we're proposing to remove the one-story additions. The ground floor is up above. The little blue strip is the new main security vestibule. We moved the main office down right next to the main entrance. We converted the old main office back into a classroom, which it once was, and then we put this eight-classroom addition with the kindergarten on the lowest level. And where we remove the kindergarten rooms, we can put a kindergarten playground dedicated just to the younger children in a separate area. And then we put older grades on the upper levels, and we're able to provide small group spaces where we connect through. So the lowest level would be pre-K, one in kindergarten. You get first, second, third, and you get your older students on the upper level. So it is a lot of work, but it allows you to keep the historic front, Old Greenwich, so that that building will really look the way it's looked for a lot of years, but it'll be sort of new from the inside out. And the one-story additions, I think if you looked at the building and you say, are they original to the building? Most people would say no. They're clearly additions. They're also at split levels, so they make the handicap accessibility issue more difficult to deal with. So by taking them away, we cut down the number of levels that we need to connect. Parkway, way up in the North Country, we're not proposing any alterations. I would say that there is actually some program improvements planned at every building to update portions of the building to meet next-generation schools. So we're talking about updating some libraries and common spaces, and in the budget, you'll see there's classroom furniture upgrades in every building. So even if there's a building addition, there are some things that need to be factored in. Again, keeping in mind, this master plan is supposed to be over 15 years, that you're going to need to do pretty much every space in your, in your district. Riverside is in that same category as some of your other older buildings. It plays an important role in the neighborhood. It's a historic structure. You know, I think it could enter the contest with Julian Curtis for prettiest front, but it is, so we're not proposing to change the front of the building in any way. It gets a little different when you go around to the back of the building, and you'll see that the area where we're proposing a blue addition in the back of the building is now some parking, and the other blue addition on the bottom of the page is where the kitchen is. And right now, there's the driveway that runs all the way around the back of the building to do kitchen deliveries, which puts a road between the building and the playground, which is really not an ideal configuration. So we're proposing to get rid of that by a fairly big move, which is move the kitchen to the upper right corner of the blue addition, a new cafeteria facing the playing field, remove the existing cafeteria, and move the art and music over here. Right now, this hallway is used as an instrumental storage room. Convert this back to a hallway and really get your special subjects and your auditorium together, expand the main office. We put a science room for the entire building, the cafeteria and kitchen on the main level. We create a nice little courtyard, which can be used as an outdoor classroom. And then on the upper floor, we're creating full-size classrooms for your older students. So we believe it can be a very sort of traditional-looking building addition and really upgrade the way the rear of the building looks without touching any of the real sort of important historic fabric of the building. And again, you look at the amount of blue and purple, it's really a new building from the inside out that would really meet the core goals of the model program. We did have a little 3D rendering. It's a little hard to see there, but that's the massing of it, and you can see that it would really sort of match the existing building and address the playing field nicely. We did put in the budget to move the playing field, but we didn't Photoshop that in for you, so it would actually be a little bit more space between the, between the building and the playing field. But you can see that when we talk about demolition, we're really just talking about taking 6,000 feet away from Old Greenwich, but we're talking about in total across all the elementaries, 98,000 square feet of additional space, which is approximately two elementary schools additional net square footage and renovating almost the same amount of space. So a lot, a lot of changes. And that doesn't come without a cost, of course. So the site column, we saw earlier, infrastructure is a lot of the sort of basic systems that we talked about, air conditioning, ventilation, handicap accessibility, and then the program improvements of about 144 million at the elementary levels, which gives you a total for all of the work at the elementary levels of around 317 million. All of the dollars you're going to see tonight are $20, $20, because there's been no prioritization yet. This has not been spread out over 15 years. So just mentally, there, you have to think of these as $20, $20, and over a 15-year period, that can really add up to additional capacity. So with the middle schools, we were asked to look at a couple of different options. One is to just renovate them in place and fix them up. They don't need expansion for additional capacity. They do need some updating. As we mentioned several times here before, the one building that we feel is probably a candidate for replacement within your 15-year master plan is Central Middle School. We know that there's been some additional work done on it, and we've been talking to, we've read some more recent reports that basically confirm that there are some serious issues with Central Middle School. It was designed and built in 1958. It's a thin structure, and it's really showing its age. So it's really becoming more and more clear that a long-term investment in renovating and restoring that building is probably not wise. So option number two is to replace Central Middle School on this current site. When we say demolish 90%, that's because there was one addition that was done in the early 2000s. It's in pretty good shape, and we should try to reuse that. And then there was a third option that we were asked to explore, which at this point everybody says, well, that's worth exploring. I'm not sure it's worth doing. And that is, what if the middle school populations were consolidated to eastern and western, and the central site was repurposed for something else? And in this case, the thing that popped up was this idea of a freshman academy, a ninth grade building at the central site. So we explored that. So how would you replace Central Middle School? Just think of this as a diagram, but basically we would build a new building in the playing field as close to the building as we could that would allow you to keep that building in service, and then we would tear down the existing building. So you can see the purple area on the right would remain, and we would probably reorient the entrance somewhere on the left side of the site, and then some portion of the existing footprint would be converted back into playing field. That would allow you to stay there while the new building gets built and then move over and tear down the existing. If we had to expand Eastern Middle School, keep in mind that eastern and western have different capacities. So the goal would be to make them both the same capacity. So you need less space at eastern, your bigger building. You need more space at western, your smaller building. So we're proposing a two-story blue addition in the upper left corner and pushing some parking and relocating parking further out. That would be very similar to the addition done in the 2000s, about a 12-classroom addition on two levels, and it would get your capacity up to that about 1,000-student level. At western, because this is a smaller building, it needs a larger addition and also needs some common areas, whereas eastern, your existing gym and cafeteria probably can handle the existing, the additional population, western could not. So the addition on the far left that's blue would connect to the most recent addition to western, which is a Park Under addition, and that pattern would continue. to Western, which is a Park Under addition, and that pattern would continue. And the addition on the lower right would be an additional gym and locker room space. So one of the things that we're proposing here is where we connect through on this existing addition is where the library is. So we're moving the library to the inside of the courtyard, so we create... And then convert that area to classrooms. And you'll get new classrooms on two levels. And we convert some classrooms in the front of the building to offices. So again, some of the similar themes that you see before. On the lower level, we will expand the cafeteria. And on the upper level, we can have a two-story media center and additional classrooms. But a very significant addition to Western, we do believe it is something that you could do while the building is occupied. So what does that add up to? Well, the top one is to replace Central Middle School and just to do addition, just to deal with the infrastructure and some updates interior to Eastern and Western. And you can see that that has $103 million, basically replacing 90% of Central Middle School. And the total cost there is around $224. In reality, and we'll correct this in the final, that probably will come down by about $20 million, because if we do replace Central Middle School, we don't have to spend $27 million on its infrastructure. So you're going to see that number come down a little bit. Consolidating the two middle schools. So this shows the both additions and the demolition is $140 million, but this does not include anything to repurpose the central site. So keep that in mind as we go forward. So Greenwich High School, where all students end up, again, as you saw earlier, has the biggest enrollment increase and the greatest capacity shortfall. So I'm going to take a break for a minute. I'm going to let Eric Kier talk a little bit about our proposed ideas for Greenwich
So when we were looking at Greenwich High School, we looked at several different aspects. First was safety and security at the main entrance. As Russ mentioned earlier, there's assurances in class or there will be assurances at classrooms with influx of 250-plus additional students. Renovation of the science wing and how to do that. And then next-generation media center type of space and how to accomplish that here at the high school. And finally, interior athletic space. For the size of school and number of students, you have the adequacy of the amount of space that you have for indoor athletics. This plan here, as Russ mentioned before, blue being new construction and purple being renovation. Your main entrance today, as you approach it through the big student plaza, does not have any sort of man trap or any sort of way to secure the front doors, so that you actually go through the front doors and the securities within the building itself. So this proposal here actually would be providing an addition in front of where your current corridor is that connects from the classroom wing to the special subjects, creating an addition there, which would create a large entrance lobby and direct access to the main office once you have access to the building. And then when we're looking at how to add additional classroom space, we originally looked at, well, we could add it directly opposite, right along that main hallway. However, what you have today in terms of the house plans worked really well for classrooms, or so destination spaces. You had that actually where your current library, media center is, used to be classroom space. And actually, converting that back into the classroom space, we can create the 12 to 15 classrooms in that zone that we need to increase in other classrooms. And then utilize the space that's directly adjacent to the connecting corridor and infill between that and where the locker rooms are today and swimming pool. And utilize that as a two-story media center. So as you come in the front door, you have this wonderful space, which could be open after hours and close off, have control over the rest of the building, but be able to really use this as a truly great space for the high school as well as for public use. When we do that and have a two-story space, we actually have the opportunity here to have a second-floor connection that comes right across and connects this... You have second-floor space to the art wing and over to the education area, so that you actually alleviate some of the congestion that can happen on the main corridor and give people multiple ways to get around the building. And also has the opportunity of connecting to the upper floors all the way across, so all the... What's that? Here you go. On the second floor, it pops up. So the three stairs that you have in there stay, but we have the opportunity to connect to those three. And then here, you can see that corridor that leads to the second floor of the media center. And you can see right here the renovation of the existing media center into those 12 to 15 classrooms. Another concept here, and it's at the top of the page, and I guess we'll go back first. Similar to your most recent project for the theater, has this wonderful main entrance to the back there. Well, the physical education department doesn't have quite a stand-alone entrance. But providing a new entrance there, cleaning up the corridor that leads to the PE offices. And to the left there, creating a new two-station gym, a new double gym, which would alleviate some of the pressure on the existing fieldhouse that you have. And also be able to provide the team rooms that currently exist, you have 45 team rooms, we could continue to have team rooms on that main level. And then on the upper level, around the perimeter of that two-story gym, be able to have fitness rooms up there or aerobics-type spaces and have a jogging, walking track wrapped around it. Generally the concept.
And again, this is based on the model program. And in this case, we've worked really closely with the high school administration to talk through this. The phys ed component is separate from the library and capacity components, so they don't need to be together. But we do think that one of the things that's really needed in the high school is more classroom space and more informal learning space. And you do have this very large student center. And as Eric mentioned, by connecting this mezzanine, you're actually creating a lot more use for that space and a possible sort of what we call a learning stair here, which would spill down and connect both levels. And by having the two-level connection all the way around, it's going to alleviate a lot of the traffic in that connecting corridor and make it a lot shorter distance to travel across the high school, which is an important thing in a building that's approaching a half a million square feet. But it's not free. And this is an itemized look at it. It basically shows the cost of the projects with the fieldhouses and athletics. It's about $116 million of program improvements. We do want to point out here that the Cardinal Stadium, option B, is included in all these numbers, because our job as your master planners is to be inclusive, so those numbers all factor in here, although that's most likely on a different track. And lastly, but not least, we were asked to look at Havemar. And I love seeing the date of 1892 every time you come into this building and the fact that it was a gift, which I'm sure you would like more of, but...
I don't know, I like the sound of the heat, don't get rid of that, okay?
Well, there's some things about this building that really need to be redone, many aspects. And one of the things that we thought we should propose here is to actually restore the auditorium and make it back into a town meeting room, so that this type of meeting would happen in the auditorium. And do a historic renovation of the auditorium, put technology into it, make it your board meeting room, make it a secondary performance room in downtown Greenwich. And then basically shrink your office space, because in terms of, and this is not criticism, it's just the way it developed as once a school building to an office building, you're rather spread out. And really rethink the office space so you get a next-generation collaborative office, just the way you'll have next-generation forward-thinking schools. So a little bit of looking forward with this building and a little bit of putting it back to the way it was, but ultimately renovating the whole building. So this is undoubtedly the least popular sheet of the entire, which is your cost summary. And we want to point out, the site work has a lot of numbers in it. A lot of this site work is not in your budget today. A lot of this is paving work that is done and playing field work that is paid for through Parks and Rec who maintain a lot of your sites. Not all of it, but we were asked to include those costs in here. So but when you're benchmarking to earlier studies, a lot of those numbers are not things that you have funded through your Board of Ed budget. Infrastructure, on the other hand, you have. In the infrastructure, we helped you with some of that in your current budget cycle. We're prepared to put that together again in a 15-year plan. We actually have that ready to go. We've worked with facilities to help prioritize that. But there's been this number of 8 to 10 million a year. In order to do the infrastructure, that's really more like 18 to 20 million a year on infrastructure alone per year in $20.20. So 15 years out, that's significantly more. And then the program improvements, I'm sure we'll get a lot more discussion. As the board chair mentioned, there's got to be a prioritization, there's a lot of different ways to handle that. Greenwich has typically done sort of a hybrid approach, where you take on projects like MESA or New Lebanon, and then you keep doing infrastructure through annual budgets. You may want to look at combining infrastructure with some of the program improvements when you address, say, a Julian Curtis or a high school. And rather than disrupt the building a little bit over 15 years, disrupt it all at once and try and get it behind you for a little bit of time. But as big as the number is on the bottom right of the page, that's still $20.20. So we looked at a couple of different ways, just as a straight-up math problem, over 15 years. And we really think you should think of that number over 15 years as more as an 850 to $900 million number when you start putting in escalation for those years out. So if you're going to walk away from today saying, what do we need to spend on facilities in the next 15 years? Think more along those lines. If you were to do everything here, which of course you may decide not to, and it matters on how you do it. So obviously, if you do a little bit more first, that'd be helpful, and you won't pay escalation. If you put it off, the escalation really accumulates. So we're going to help you out with some of these different scenarios as we finalize our master plan. Right now, we're using 4% per year escalation. That number historically has gone all the way from minus 3 to 15, plus 15. So you really need to keep your eye on that number. We've suffered some setbacks since the Great Recession in the construction industry that we're starting to see those numbers creep up. But again, the tools that'll be provided as part of this master plan will allow you to insert the actual escalation for any year that's behind you and update all numbers going forward. So if you just wanted to see a sort of basic pie chart, and this is, I think, pretty clear, what's needed in the Greenwich Public Schools? About half the money is needed to make them good schools again, program, and about half of them is needed to keep the buildings in good shape and your sites in good shape. So it's about half the money is about making good buildings, good buildings and good sites. And about half of it is about making them schools suitable for the next generation So this is just one possible way of sort of grouping things together, accessibility and capacity, putting three buildings together. And then this is the freshman academy. I think that we talked, we didn't talk about, is about an $80 million addition to the proposal. But then we would not need to do as much work at Greenwich High School if you move the ninth grade out. So it still is a net additional cost of $51. So that's where we are. We're not expecting, of course, any approvals, but we do want to sort of run this through. It's an awful lot of work to talk about this quickly. And again, the proposed concepts come from model programs that were developed in collaboration with building administrators and the capacity studies. The room utilization was all reviewed with building administrators at a number of meetings. So this was a highly interactive process with the people who use the buildings. And we look forward to the opportunity of helping you prioritize things moving forward and come up with a plan to implement.
Okay, shut it off over us. But we have questions.
Yeah, and I would like to talk about the New Lebanon issue that was brought up, like what you would. So New Lebanon today is a two-section-per-grade-level building. And the demographic projections for New Lebanon were done based on the attendance zone that goes there today. When you decided to replace New Lebanon, you decided to make it larger. It's being built as a three-section-per-grade-level building. So it has a capacity in excess of its traditional attendance zone. So theoretically, once that comes online, it can absorb some of the undercapacity elsewhere in the district.
Depending on program or preschool or...
Right. So then we go back to the capacity chart, and we did this, and say, well, there's five or six buildings that are having capacity issues. Where do we take it from? And that's a tough decision. And what would it mean if you downsized those additions at those other buildings? Well, first of all, most of the additions at a building like a Julian Curtis or a Riverside are not about classroom capacity. They're about providing the full program. So we did, Eric Wilson and I did an intellectual exercise, and we can show it and say, well, because New Lebanon is really going to have a capacity, I think it's designed at 425. By the system we're using, we show it as a 408 capacity, whereas it's currently at 268, I think. So 408, 268, that's a lot of additional capacity there. We shouldn't plan to not use that. You've just committed to do that. So absolutely. Some of the additions at ISD or Riverside could be shrunk so that they don't provide as much capacity, but it's not going to make a huge difference. It would probably reduce the amount of new square footage in the elementary division by about 20%, so it might save 20, 25 million out of your 770-million master plan. It's not going to wipe any one of those out. So I guess we're looking for a little guidance. Do we want to be specific about this? Or do we want to talk about you could keep all... We could keep it the way we're showing it today, and we could show an option that says, and as that capacity fills up, you'll find that you don't need to do as much at the other buildings, which would result in a savings. This came to us late. This came to us late, because we had a little disconnect trying to get some of that information. So you're very accurate when you pointed that out, and we've been sort of struggling with how do we do this? Because we have a demographic analysis done one way, and then we have a magnet school under construction that's going to change some of those patterns.
Yes, first, there are, I think, about 70 odd students that reside in the catchment zone for New Lebanon that currently aren't there. So the expectation is they're going to naturally migrate back to the school, so that will actually lessen some of the capacity at the other schools. We fully expect that. When Glenville was built, it's sort of the, if you build it, they will come. Houses in the neighborhood went up extremely high after the new school was open. And again, the portion of town where New Lebanon resides is one of the more affordable portions of town. There's also multifamily housing, which you don't see in most of the other parts of town. So my expectation is we're going to see a growth in that school. So I'm not as concerned about that at the moment, and I think because this is a 15-year plan, if something changes, you adjust in the out-years, right? The things that we probably will prioritize are buildings that need renovations for safety, ADA, accessibility, things of that sort. So I'm not sure that it's something I think we need to beat ourselves up over presently.
Russ, that's great guidance, because what we can do with 140 differences, basically say 70 will come back, and the other 70, not going to worry about. That's additional capacity for growth we can't predict, because there is a new school effect. You saw it with Glenville, we saw it when we added a school in West Orange. People move in before that.
And just to make sure, I want to make sure everybody else on the board is comfortable with that. I mean, obviously, you can adjust as time goes on.
I think our numbers have to be consistent. I think the RTM will be all over this. So I'm going to dissent on that, and I'm going to let others speak.
Can you be more specific, I'm not trying to understand which part of that?
The numbers on capacity need to be consistent in our documents, across all documents with the RTM, where would be.
So to that point, though, Jennifer, then they would be building in the fact that they would, they would be asking us for $37 million to build a new building, right? Which doesn't really exist in the plan that was just put forward today. So if you want to be consistent, you'd say, no, no, we got to knock down what we have. So it's sort of an apples and oranges. We need to actually have that building built, which is happening, ADA steelwork is going on, and let this play out. I don't think we'd be making massive changes at any of the schools that are probably going to be in that priority one bucket.
And we can make the numbers be consistent. They're inconsistent today, but we can fix the numbers. And one of our thoughts was already is that, really on the enrollment slide, we call target enrollment. It's not target enrollment, it's projected enrollment. So we're going to change the language and define it clearly in the final document, because the one that you were handed out contradicts itself, and that can't survive. But when we go to projected enrollment and capacity provided, those are different things, and those are choices to make.
So Russ, you raised a point when you were introducing this, that this was based on current attendance zones and patterns. I hate to use the R-word, but I'm going to use it. Did you give any thought to what some potential redistricting might do to the plan?
Basically, no. That was sort of not on our radar screen, and we could look at that selectively, and I would think that you would. But I also think when we look at, when we sat down to say, well, what will we do to this building? And I think that many of you have seen the model program sheet that shows, space by space, existing model and the shortfall. Most of the things that have shortfalls are common in support areas. It's not going to be heavily modified by moving 30 students from this building to that building. Riverside's cafeteria is still too small. Old Greenwich's access is still very poor. Julian Curtis still has a terrible cafeteria. So these are the big drivers of, it's your model program that's making each school whole that are the big drivers of the program improvements. Tweaking attendance zones may help a little, but I really think it's more about your magnet programs and providing a full complement of spaces. One of the most telling slides for us was when we started analyzing net square foot per student at the elementary zone. It became very clear that you have a number of buildings that you've done a really excellent job of using every corner of, and getting a lot of kids into the same space. But, you know, the list of changes in education and culture that you, for buildings like Old Greenwich and Riverside, especially Julian Curtis, that's why these buildings need these spaces. And, you know, I think you can go through them, especially when you look at support programs, which are mandated and well-provided here in Greenwich, they really are not inappropriate spaces.
Thank you very much. First of all, I think we've heard loud and clear often that our neighborhood schools are very much valued by our district, and so the fact that you're looking, I mean, Old Greenwich and Riverside are a perfect example of that. I mean, they're these beautiful pieces that you're trying to just really renovate and keep. So I like where you're going with it, I like your general theme, where you're moving office space up front, where you're putting kids together, older kids on upper floors, I think it's all brilliant. So thank you so much. Can we go to this special, all-numbers page? I just have, want to make sure I'm fully appreciating it.
Can you pick us the number?
It's the most important page in the document.
772 on the bottom right.
And that's sort of my question as we talk to the community, is, we really shouldn't look at this as a 772 number. I think we talked a little bit about this, right, Ms. Raven, in our finance meeting, is the 278 is something that we're going to continually have to do. And we could debate that number. I know this is, we've historically, obviously, underperformed that number. This is looking at more like 18 and a half million, right, per year right now. But on the asset value, it actually kind of makes sense, on a billion land, a billion replacement costs.
It shouldn't be a surprise with this amount of real estate that...
That would be your sort of annual CapEx, really, if you divide it by 15. So what we're really sort of, we'll be asking the community for, I think, from a big picture, is really the 393. Yes? Would that be the way you'd frame it?
Well, I think that they pay for everything, but the new ask, and the real news, is these program-based improvements. And I think that that's really what was explained to our firm, that's one of the reasons this master plan is happening, is to really level-set your programs and try and get ahead of things, rather than, this building's terrible, I've got to replace it. This building's leaking, I've got to replace it. These sort of crisis modes.
Right. And so, sorry.
Just clarify that one more ago. The program, though, when you say that, it kind of sounds like you want a better art room, but that also includes ADA accessibility, the other functional aspects that are important too, doesn't it?
Well, technically, ADA is in the infrastructure number. And we try and put this in categories, because that's how human brains think best, but we'd really like you to start to think about it horizontally, because even though it'll always make sense for some portion of your infrastructure to be addressed the way you do, exactly the way you do it now. I mean, if you're going to, we're helping you remove oil tanks district-wide, makes a great sense. We'll do seven oil tanks, hopefully this summer, and get them all done. It doesn't really make sense, though, to do windows one year, ceilings another year, floors another year, and then convert it to a maker space the next year. And that's kind of the pattern that you're on. So we would like to try and see the program and infrastructure a little more integrated, but we do understand that the 393 is pretty much the new ask, because that's not really been deeply integrated into your annual ask. You've had some upgrades to Family and Consumer Science, some of your Learning Commons, there's been little bits of program in that annual ask. Then obviously, your MESA project was a big program, New Lebanon was a big program, replacement Hamilton Avenue, Glenville, et cetera.
Just so I'm clear, sorry. So within the 393, for example, Central, 103 program, 27 infrastructure, but correct me if I'm wrong, before you were saying the 27 would come out if you did the 103?
The next time you see that, that number will probably be about 4 million in infrastructure, if you replace Central. And it depends when, because it's got some things it needs, like today.
Like the boiler, the con or whatever.
A few other things, but yes, you'll see that number come down.
Any other numbers, or is that the only one? Or the program is going to sort of take the infrastructure?
Yeah, well, I think that's the biggest one. I would say that for people like Eric Wilson and myself, who have seen the hundreds or maybe thousands of rows of Excel spreadsheet in here, these numbers are not perfect. They're going to need a lot of refinement as you go forward. It's a master plan, we're up at this level, but I think it's pretty granular. It's not going to be 200 million, it's not going to be 1,400. We think we're very...
In the zone.
In the zone, but there's no doubt, you know, if you go forward with a project like Julian Curtis, just like you did with New Lebanon or MESA, you form a committee, there'll be a study phase, scope will be refined, that number may go up, that number may go down. In Greenwich, they tend to go up. Time tends to, I mean, think about those projects. Those projects had, from study, and I've done some of the research, from study to ribbon cutting, you're talking about eight to 10 years. So this is the beginning, as was said, the beginning of a much longer-term process.
All right, Ms. Dayton, and then Ms. Raven.
Before we, is this on, Erin? I guess it is. Before we go further, I'd like the superintendent to help us frame this discussion. What outcomes do you want from this meeting? And then I will have comments to make, to share my views.
Certainly. So I think this is our introduction, of course, to a broader, larger plan. I think we understand that there are going to be, we started with finance committee kind of hearing this. I think the board will determine if it would like finance committee to continue, you know, as kind of a long-range work group on this, or, you know, how they, how we'd like to handle that. But I think our next steps are looking at some of these central middle school topics. I think if anything is going to happen at Central Middle School, it's going to take an engagement effort. And I think once you have that engagement effort, I think that is one of the linchpin decisions we have with this particular plan. So I think that's one area that we need to consider first. And I think after that, we need to look at working with BET, working with RTM, you know, really educating them on what this plan says and how we're going to go about tackling that. Are we going to do, you know, a 0 to 5, 6 to 10, 11 to 15? Are we going to make it, you know, a broader, longer-term plan? That sometimes happens. But I think some of our next year's capital outlay proposal is going to be based on some of those decisions we make in the next three months, to be honest. Okay, so based on that frame, I'd like to give some feedback. I do not want to demolish Central Middle School, but I do want to rebuild. So in other words, I don't want to eliminate it. And then, in prioritization, I always put health and safety first. And under that grouping, I consider a highest priority getting our three elementary schools without ADA access up to code. So I would put that in the first five years. And in addition, I'd like to see the security upgrade to Greenwich High School's lobby in the same category, because I feel that, given recent events, the time to act is now. So I would like us to consider the theme of risk management in terms of a way to start to prioritize these projects. It's understandable to the rest of the community.
Ms. Raven.
Before giving individual board member feedback, I think one of the things that the budget committee did ask KG and Dee, when you look at some of the prices per school and you think about what a new school would cost, so Russ, if you can share with the rest of the board and the audience, because we did ask that question, wow, when is it better to just start fresh and build a new school?
It sometimes is, and we think you made a good decision with New Lebanon. When you look at that building, you look at Central Middle School, actually, you'll see a lot of similarities. But when you look at a Riverside or Julian Curtis, and just the way they're constructed, we think we get much more value in additions and renovations than you would in a facility. And it's about value, not just the straight-up dollar cost. It's also the, you know, I know if you start dividing 770 by 37 million, you'll start to see the number of new buildings. But keep in mind that there's sites involved, and there's demolition involved as well. So we're trying to find a way to get, to preserve what's good and bring things back, and to preserve very significant investments, especially in your largest building, the high school. That replacement of that today, you know, may be half a billion, and you're not going to do that, and we're not proposing anything like that. We've got some brand-new space in there that's excellent. And so it is a tough decision, and I know that there are, we've heard schools of thought that we're just going to serially replace buildings. We've got three done, we've got eight more elementaries to go. We don't believe from a community and historic preservation or asset management that that makes sense for a good portion of your buildings.
Dr. Francis.
So I think I'm sort of still at the thinking, trying to think up pros and cons, how do we approach this? You know, I think with Central, I really feel like we need to go through and talk about sort of what are the pros and cons, what do we think the advantages are from an educational perspective, from a community perspective, what are the disadvantages? I mean, off the top of my head, I mean, I can think of some, but I feel like there's, I need a broader discussion before I feel like I could weigh into it. But, you know, one of the things we've talked about for years is sort of that tension between teeming and leveling, right? So if we had two middle schools instead of three, that seems like that would tend to ease that tension. It's the less expensive option. I think the downside is, you know, just like with our elementary schools, I do think there's a sense of our local neighborhood school. And while I'm a Western and my local neighborhood school would be preserved, you know, somebody else's wouldn't. So what's the impact of that? I would want to know about, you know, how much is that going to affect travel time for students? So I feel like we need a little more data to help us in terms of what are the pros and cons, and what are the things I'm not even thinking of that would help me make that decision. So I feel, and I think, you know, reaching out to the community, we get some input on that, you know, from educators, we get input on that. I feel like I'm not ready to make that call yet. I do think it's important, obviously, because it seems like a whole lot of other things are dependent on that. I would see very, also the freshman academy, to me, I mean, I, at the moment, I'm thinking mostly negatives about that, but I'm sure there are positives, so, you know, trying to understand the pros and cons of that, too. You know, I think it would, to me, it would be very hard to, the freshmen aren't sort of their own class, there's so much integrated into other things that are happening, how do you make that work in two campuses? So I think I would need a lot more convincing on that one, but again, I think I need pros and cons on that.
You just answered, that's why this is board work, Dr. Francis.
There we go.
That's why this is board work.
Right, but those are the kinds of questions I'm looking to work on and trying to get information on. And then to clarify, for the freshman academy, if you were to do that, then you presumably would not need a lot of those extra rooms and that media center renovation, is that right?
Well, we actually think you wouldn't need the phys ed addition at all, and that the classroom and library thing would be downsized, but would still need to happen in some forms.
I'm sorry, in the lobby improvement for security at the high school, how does that, does that construction interact much with the new media center, or are those pretty easily two separate projects?
We could separate them. Right now, we have conceived as a single project.
So I guess I was thinking along the same lines, could some of that work be phased? And in some of the other buildings, it makes sense to do it all at once. But when I look at the high school... When I look at the high school, I think about that front as something that probably should happen sooner than later, and is that possible?
Yeah, you know, let's, let us take a look at separating that and giving you separate numbers on that, because it could be.
Ms. Wilson.
One of the things that often happens in planning is you look at categories, you say, well, which one's facing the most enrollment pressure? Which buildings have had the least work and need the most health and safety? And which building's in the worst condition? And you hope they all come together. They don't for you. Central's in the worst condition, the high school has the most enrollment pressure. Julian Curtis, Old Greenwich and Riverside really have had the least work and have the most health and safety concerns.
When you talk about Central, I know we actually have a project in the works, as Ms. Wilson is next. We're looking to do some shoring up at Central, is that something that if we were able to come up with a plan sooner than later, we wouldn't need to do some of those other repairs?
Well, I think the shoring up that you're doing right now is the beginning of what the future of Central is going to look like. I think that you're going to be facing something like that more or less in some form every year going forward. So they're expensive, they're not as expensive as replacing the entire building, but as we've said before, it's the Florida ceiling height, it's the way the exterior wall is constructed, these are things that you can't out renovate, you can only replace. You don't have these issues at Riverside, beautiful ceiling heights. Even a building like North Street, only a few years younger, a lot of improvements in Western and Eastern. So that's the building that's really in a tough spot.
Ms. Wilson.
First of all, thank you. First of all, thank you. Obviously, you put a lot of time and effort into this, and I think it's important that we look out, project a whole 15 years ahead because even if we take it in a piece model, I think that's really important. I also think that the neighborhood schools, from having learned nothing else in this town, I've seen how much people put value on their neighborhood schools. So I think that, you know, even just the logistical nightmare of, you know, busing everybody in Central Greenwich all the way to the Eastern or Western, I think that's something we might need to think about, or something that might come up as we look at this more closely and hear what the community would have to say on this. Something about the enrollment, the enrollment pressure and capacity, just another idea to throw out there, but has anyone ever considered with the, with your enrollment pressure for the high school, the K to six, seven to nine, and 10 to 12 model?
Grade level configurations, sort of like attended zones.
Right.
I would say outside of our scope politely, that's a big question and it throws everything up in the air. And I would say if you feel like you're going to have difficulty getting money behind this plan, change only attended zones and grade level configurations and then drive by. Now, it's a good question, but I would say that, you know, you have a K 5, 7, 9, or 6, 8, 7, 12, 9, 12, that's the most traditional grade level configuration in school districts in the country. The junior high school, the 7, 9 model sort of fell out of favor for a lot of legitimate reasons. And so all we can say is in our work, you have a very popular and successful grade level configuration.
Ms. O'Neal.
I think the first thing we have to do is to set criteria for making a decision on our priorities. You know, people are saying, oh, I think, you know, community schools or this or that or the other thing. I think we need to make a set of criteria and then make sure that every time you make a decision, that we're making the decision against that same criteria, that we're not varying from it, and that we've considered all the pros and cons to each situation. And that they're based on some kind of fact where possible and not just how it feels or what someone might think or how it was when they went to school, but to have really solid criteria for making our decision. And I think the most basic one is what's the best way to deliver education for our kids?
And that's why this is all based on a model program that started the educational program. And we actually did it in two ways, we have core spaces and goal spaces. So a lot of the program improvements is based on an educational plan that was transferred into a list of spaces.
You were saying earlier you wish that the criteria were more in alignment, but I have a different perspective because optimistically speaking, if you wanted to take health and safety as the criteria, I'm looking at the existing net square foot per student. And it just so happens that the schools that need the ADA access at the elementary level are also the schools that have this problem with existing net square feet. Julian Curtis 102, Old Greenwich 95, Riverside 87, around the lower end of that spectrum. So by making the ADA access and the additions, you're actually solving two problems.
Yeah, we see a lot of logic to addressing those three buildings, it's just you have other issues as well, but there's definitely a lot of logic behind those three in terms of having the least amount of work done.
I knew it wasn't working.
No, it's working. So there's definitely, you know, we look forward to helping you prioritize. We've already done a couple of exercises and, you know, I think some of the things the superintendent mentioned is a very common way of taking a 15-year plan and saying, there's a phase one, there's a phase two, there's a phase three. What I wouldn't, and future, or, yeah, phase never. The other thing that we just wanted to remind you is that thinking horizontally and building by building rather than system by system. Because once you, if you get too granular about criteria, you may not need new ceilings and LED lighting, no one had that on their priority, but if you're going to address the rest of the building, go do all the LED lighting at the same time. So it gets, you just need to think holistically as well as what are the triggers, what are the high priority triggers that make you select this one project over another?
Ms. Wilson.
This is the only number we have for Central, correct? This is, this number, what is it, the 103 for the program for Central Middle School? That is based on demolishing and building a whole new building. We don't have, we don't have a number in terms of, as Mr. Bernstein said, piece by piece, right? Because of...
That's 70, maybe we're telling.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, the high school you could do in phases, but Central, I think is a...
Central's a zero or a one, if you're going to do it or not. So, and again, we are keeping the 2,000 in there and...
I guess, Dr. Gilday, I'll address this to you, but I guess maybe working backwards. So by October, we would be building our capital budget and request for the next year, and we'd want to indicate to the BET and the RTM and the town what this is going to start to look like. So with that in mind, do you have a sense of a project plan to get us to October?
Okay, turn it over to Lori. She's our project planner on this.
Mike's not going to reach.
Nothing here.
Can I just stand up? Come on. Thank you. Exactly. Movement is good for you.
Okay, so in your packets, I provided a project plan to outline what we think the next step is in this process. So that would include community engagement as well, as was mentioned earlier. And we'd be looking to have this, I forgot the term, was it an advisory team that we may have called it? There've been several project plans we've been working on, so I'm trying to remember all the team names. And in this particular case, we would be focusing on the programmatic improvements, so those are the replacements, renovations and expansions that you saw here tonight. And the capital, infrastructure with the firm maintenance type projects, those we would have those flow through our normal annual capital planning process. And so that would happen over the summer, September, and be presented as part of our annual capital plan and 15-year plan in October.
Dr. Francis.
When I was looking through the agenda plan and through this, I don't see any scheduled follow-up times for the board. And it certainly seems to me that I seriously doubt we're going to make all these decisions tonight. So, you know, what is sort of our thought about follow-ups? And I think one thing that would be good for tonight is to just even think about, okay, what are the kinds of decisions we're going to be trying to make at what time? Just to chunk out some plan as we move forward in terms of that.
Right, I mean, so the plan that we have here is a draft plan, and we, you know, put it together to try to start to visualize what will happen over the course of the next couple of months. We do need to add some more lines in there for, as I think we mentioned earlier, how the finance committee will help us through this process and when we come back to the board with, you know, updates or recommendations.
Ms. Dayton.
I know I'm not going to be popular for making this proposal, but it looks like we may need to add some summer board meetings because if the community forums are in May, there's no possible way we get to October with a plan unless we meet. So I'm just saying I'm available if anyone else wants to meet over the summer, I'll be negotiating labor contracts anyway.
I actually don't get to that plan, and I was actually thinking about maybe even in the form of a retreat, because I think Ms. O'Neill's point is a solid one where we should establish criteria as we're looking at this. Yes, there's some natural things that bubble to the surface, but as we look towards the out years, prioritizing those projects is going to require a framework.
I think also building those communication and feedback loops with the BET, with your RTM, our RTM districts, I think all of that is key too, because the other thing is, is we can get stuck with thinking, oh, you know, RTM 8 is not going to want to lose Central as a middle school, but we're presupposing that. We've heard a lot about the traffic, we've heard a lot about congestion, we've heard a lot about safety. You know, you never know what you propose and what may be the thoughts of the community, or you hear very clearly and that's a very easy decision, you know, and then you forge along that path. But I think it does demonstrate that the board is looking long-term, you're looking at all of the fiscal opportunities that are there for the delivery of an outstanding educational program. And I thank Russ for that, that thought on that, I wish they weren't named like Eastern and Western, I wish they had like different names, just like North or South, wouldn't be great, but, you know, seeing that those renovations are really quite reasonable in the scheme of renovations, you know, isn't necessarily something you would have thought of instantly, but when I think of that, you know, advanced French teacher, that's really point six, but I'm having to pay her full time because she's going point two, point two, point two, you know, it really makes me think about different options for our students in a reasonable sized middle school configuration. So it at least gives us that moment, right, that pause to think differently. Thank you.
So I guess what I'd like to see is some dates start to come to this, right? And this is great, it is a starting point, but really that step by step, how are we going to get to October, make sure we've got the input at the right times that we're formulating it, and if the, if the finance committee is going to be budget, whatever, whatever name they love, the budget committee basically takes that and then comes to the, right, exactly, that's what it was last year, comes to the full board, you know, with concepts already kind of packaged and gets the feedback from the full board. I think that will also help move the discussion. But again, you know, the full board, this is a, this is a full board effort with the superintendent, the administrative team, and obviously our partners in the rest of the town, whether that's the BET, RTM, and frankly, the parents and voters, because this is, this is a long range project that's going to take everybody's effort.
So will this be presented again formally at the next business meeting? So public will also be involved, or are we waiting?
Yeah, I think that, is that the, the agenda is a made community forum. I don't actually know, and I was thinking about this when we were talking about this before the meeting, whether we would actually have even an action item on this at the next meeting. This is just a report to us as a starting point. You know, obviously, we want to thank KG&amp;D for all the hard work, just because we're not going to accept a report like we do for the staff doesn't mean we don't love you anymore, I mean, less than we love you.
We just want to fulfill your expectations.
I can't promise you the second. All right, Dr. Francis.
Just as, as another thing, as we're sort of brainstorming on this that I feel like hasn't really come up so much is if we don't do the freshman academy at that Central Middle School site, if we are going to change that, what else might we do there, right? And I think that would be important to get community input on as well. I mean, it may turn out they'd say, wow, we would love to have X, we would love, you know, maybe having a civic center, you know, whatever it may be, are there ideas of other things that we would want to do that might make sense for the town? I mean, that, that's a piece that I don't have any particular ideas on, but I think that would need to be sort of part of what we're thinking about, you know, what are the positives that we would do as well.
And I do believe our impact analysis framework, to Mrs. O'Neill's point, I love that we start with the evaluation first, that's really key. And I think the framework we'd like to use is students, district operational and community, same framework we're using in our SST review, but obviously setting that criteria ahead. But I think that to know that you're always considering the students first, then your district operational, which includes your financial impact, and that is your transparent financial as well as your indirect costs, and then your community, you know, you could always have the community that you know that there are engagement opportunities throughout, I think, and that input is taken, I think that goes a long way to building those communication bridges that we need.
And I do want to note, throughout the process, KG&amp;D has hosted numerous public forums, also has presented to PTAC, and I know you came to the BET budget meeting, which I also thought was very helpful to help lay the groundwork for a harder discussion that's going to come in the future. Dr. Francis.
When I, as we were talking about this, I sort of brings, I was writing down a couple of things, and I had sort of even broken it down a little bit more, which is sort of safety legal requirements, which are clearly student issues, but, you know, safety legal requirements, educational, then sort of community, parent, student, I wrote a citation, but kind of that community component, and then I put cost last, but obviously it's beyond there.
Ms. Reardon.
So I was going to say, as the budget committee, be happy to help. I think the way we've looked at it is just to help facilitate and make things go faster, smoother, more efficiently. So happy to help with putting in dates and project plans, it's another favorite thing in mind to do. And totally understand it's the whole board, but we're just trying to facilitate it and make it more efficient and effective.
All right, well, that went a lot smoother than I thought it might. We appreciate all the work and the work that's to come. Obviously, we'll be looking forward to continuing this conversation. I guess if there's information or you need clarification from the board sooner than later, certainly we can schedule one in future meetings, but this is a good start. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, agenda plan, wow, totally linked on that. All right, so this was a, it's been an interesting time for us because we have missed a couple of work sessions because of snow. So at our public meeting on the 19th, we will take up some of the items that we discussed at the meeting in February. So a big one is the policies that are coming forward, so...
The board has already received the policies from 6,000, series 6,000 to 6,142. So you've had them for a while, and so we'll vote on them at the next meeting. Meanwhile, just because you need more policies to read, I'm going to send you some more policies well in advance of the time that we will be discussing them so that you do have the time, because there will be a bachelor, and we'll again highlight those that you might want to look at more in depth. But thank you very much for your support of the move to the K format, I really do appreciate, we all do. Kathleen and Vic and I have been moving along as quickly as we can and putting our nose to the grind so that we get this thing done sooner rather than later.
All right, anything else anybody sees that needs to be added to the agenda? If not, just email Jill and I, Jennifer, and we'll figure out how to work it in. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.